... meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we just want to announce that Board Member Thompson is excused from tonight's meeting for business travel. We hope he has a very successful trip. Onto item number two, which is public participation. If you'd like to speak under public participation, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you're going to use that one, just hit the button so the green light illuminates, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Bevel. I live at 12 Blair Road, and I have four children in the Merrimack school system. I wanted to come and talk about two things. One, I wanted to raise an issue that may require resolution by the Board. And the second was to request an item to be put on a future agenda. The first item is to ask that the administration issue a clear, concise letter of clarification, allowing teachers the option to choose to grade and review homework from now forward until such time as the Board establishes a new policy or protocol. And the second would be to place an item on a future agenda to allow parents' discussion and input to the Board on homework grades for high school students, accumulated GPA, or anyone else who wants to participate in the discussion. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we will close public participation, and we'll go on to item number three, which is the food service procurement procedures and code of conduct. I invite to the table Director of Food Services, Dave Zieke, and I will turn the mic over to Matt Chevanel as well.
Thank you. Just let me set the stage for this. It's kind of like every time you turn around either in food service, or fund accounting, or any time you deal with the state, federal government, there's added requirements put upon you through policies, procedures, whatnot, that you have to come up with and adhere to. Tonight, you have before you, this is a requirement of the National School Lunch Program run by the Department of Ed, Washington, DC. This is administrated through the state of New Hampshire, the Bureau of Nutrition. We're required now to have a procurement procedure plan. We use the template that was provided by the state of New Hampshire, and we've kind of modified it to fit what we do, and hopefully they'll like what we changed in the plan. And this is for your consideration, and we need this in order to continue to receive reimbursable meals, Dave, correct? And federal funds for the food service program. So, it's a lot of pages, but it's a template that we had, that we crafted in order to make it customizable to Merrimack School District, so. Dave?
Well, I think you stole all my thunder, Matt, so I think you did an excellent job.
Sorry about that, Dave.
This is a new item that the Bureau of Nutrition has requested be part of the annual online application that we submit every year. So, the form that we had filled out, again, was a template that they supplied to all SAUs. We kind of like filled in some of the blanks and hoped to submit it to you for approval, and then I will then submit it to the Department of Education, Bureau of Nutrition, for their approval. So, you have any questions? I'm sure there's questions on it, but...
Are there any questions? Andy? I feel such definitive raising of the hand.
Well, this is, you know, this is really weird. You've been on the Board for a while, and then when a topic comes up, you know that there's a question that always gets asked, with a little head of Davis Powell over my shoulder, as you go through the process of reapplying every year. Yeah, thank you. In all of this, did you evaluate whether it's a doubly proper thing for the Merrimack District to re-up every year this year like we do every year? So, I wondered if you had any thoughts on looking at not participating, more freedom in... I know you talked in the past about you get good cost, cost effectiveness for what you need, but you're also bound by sort of the requirements of what you serve, so I just thought I'd...
Sure. Yeah, every year, we rehash that out, but it's still very cost-effective for us to be part of the National School Lunch Program, not only for reimbursable meals for free and reduced students, which we supply, but also from receiving commodity foods that we do receive from the USDA. So, I think it's still a valuable commodity that we use.
And as a follow-on, are you finding any complaints from students or parents about what it is that you serve, any deficiencies that you'd like to address, or anything like that in terms of stuff?
Nope, not this time, so.
Okay.
It's been very good.
Thanks.
I have two questions, and I guess this first one is, you know, I read through it, and some of it's just plain common sense and the good way of doing business and how we procure food. The documentation's the only question I really have, and that is, is this going to create a considerable amount of work for you? A, you know, and is it optional? If you say no, then it is.
It's a considerable lot of work will be just putting everything in perspective when you're doing bids. We do a lot of the bids already. We do the milk and the bread. Every year is an annual bid process, and then the grocery and papers are already done with the buying group, so those are already in place. It may be just some other ones that we need to address, so documentation's always a part of life when we're talking with the USDA and government, so I don't think it's going to be that drastic.
Okay. And then, are there any concerns with being able to meet the requirements that are set forth in the template at this point?
Again, I don't think so, because I think we're already following most of the requirements. This is just a formality to send in so that we're, we have all our checkmarks checked off.
Fair enough. So, on that note, if you, what we can do is if we want to put on consent for the next meeting, if there are any questions that come up after reading this, we can absolutely pull it off consent and rediscuss, but if not, we will just move to authorize this document be signed off. I have to sign off as a chair to do it, but as long as you go with it, we'll just sign off at the next meeting. Andy?
So, the reason that we're doing this is because you have to sign off as Board on this document. That's the reason that we're doing this, okay?
On her behalf.
On our behalf.
On the Board's behalf.
On our behalf, right, correct. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Easy one.
Thank you.
So, we are on to item number four, which is the Board's message to the Superintendent for the 2018-2019 budget preparation. So, with the feedback I've gotten from the team, and just to let you know, I shared with the Superintendent all of your notes and context, so that way, as they're questioning and if there are things that come up, then we can always look at, you know, the source of the question, therefore, if there's any clarifiers, they can even just reach out for clarifiers. So, I did that as a courtesy, but this is a cohesive message from the Board for 2018-2019, and I'll read it aloud for the people at home. "To meet our mission of maintaining a productive and safe learning environment, we need to budget to maintain infrastructure and facilities, expand technology to meet student demand, and correlate expenditures with the goal of continually improving student performance and meet the needs of diverse learners. While achieving these goals, we need to be mindful of the tax burden of these expenditures and the size of the student population we are serving year over year. In parentheses, are we in an incline or decline in the number of students served, and are we staffing to the current and projected student population appropriately? All items impacting safety of students, staff, and the community should be included in the operating budget. All projects that are important but not imperative should be identified and considered for warrant articles so that the taxpayer can have input into its adoption. Initiatives the Board acknowledges as valuable and are encouraged to be included for budgetary consideration are technology investment, mental health support resources, and full-day kindergarten. The full-day kindergarten proposal should have a comprehensive plan showing detail of the current cost of the half-day program and the proposed cost of full day, space needs, operational impact to existing school programs, et cetera. The budget should have detailed expenditure so that it presents the requests for funds in a transparent way for the Board and our taxpayer base to better understand the level of required funding it takes to operate the district. Please be sure to notate these items in the operating budget that are included in the capital improvement plan. Areas that have been specifically identified as needing detail are building infrastructure, such as heating systems, in parentheses, in light of the analysis by Honeywell as to the aging systems we have in place, co-curricular transportation, how is it being utilized? Are we budgeting enough/too much/too little to meet student demand? And enhanced materials for the new math and science curricula. We also ask if you can present information on costs to upgrade hand dryers to higher-performing units to improve hygiene, and water fountain units with water bottle filters that include water bottle fillers, sorry, that include filtration functionality in light of our concerns for water quality in the last 18 months. Finally, the cut list is as important to us as the budget. For those items that did not make the budget, please provide us a list and the plan to compensate for not having it. If the district leadership has items of interest that were not proposed for the budget, the Board would find value in knowing what is of value to enhance the educational experience that was not requested in the spirit of financial responsibility. When the cuts are proposed by administration or the Board, please be ready to discuss the consequences of these cuts to the operation and to educational outcomes. The Board should be accompanied, or I'm sorry, the budget should be accompanied by a detailed communication plan so that those who want to weigh in on the process have the means to do so through productive channels. This communication plan should include press releases so that we can get media coverage of the opportunities for our community to weigh in throughout the budget season, up to and including the deliberative session." Are there any questions, or did I miss anything? So far, so good. So, we will put this into records to share with administrative leadership throughout the district for budget season. And let's, we can go on to item number five, which is the year-end surplus to reduce taxes, and I'll turn it over to Matt Chevanel.
Thank you. The year-end surplus from 1617, that, as you all know, we have to give that all back to reduce the school portion of the tax rate. We can't, like a town, retain any, to ward off any fluctuations in the tax rate that may come forward in the future. This year, the surplus is 3.2 million. Most of it was personnel savings. We had some good savings in special ed. We had some health insurance savings, et cetera. And then, on the revenue side, we had some more revenue than planned for in catastrophic aid and Medicaid reimbursement. We always try and be very cautious on those because they can change every single year, mid-year, whenever, you know, you really don't expect it. Some of the rules can change on what you can claim and when you can claim it. The issue with it being 3.2 million, and the issue with us not being able to retain surplus, and you know I probably mentioned this anyway, is, you know, last year, we were looking at a surplus of 4.9 million. This year, it's 3.2. That's $1.7 million that's going to have to be made up by taxes. So, even if our budget was flat, because we didn't have the same surplus as last year, $1.7 million more would need to be raised by taxes. So, that's around 55 cents or so on the tax rate, so just to let you know.
Are there any questions? I'm seeing none. So, on that note, something that we've had available to us, but will be required by warrant article, if you feel it's something that should be advocated for in the budget season, this is a time to really kind of take a look at it as well. We don't retain any surplus by state law, but it can be afforded to us if a portion of our surplus can be afforded to us in the event that we pass a warrant article allowing for such a, such a... If you feel that based on how we are operating our district, that's something to be considered. That's always something we've kept open. If you feel this isn't the right time, or the circumstances don't require it, then we don't have to address it. But that's something that, as you're saying, we do return every dime to the taxpayer, and we have since I've moved to Merrimack. If, for some reason, circumstances make us want to consider that, then we can look at that for a future.
Well, the issue from my point, having worked for a town for around eight, nine years, and a school district for around 20, is having that surplus that you can retain, I forget what the town has right now, maybe $4 million. I could be quoting that figure wrong, but they used the half a million of it to potentially reduce the tax rate. So, they took the surplus that they had, and then because their portion of the rate was going to go up a little piece, they took $500,000 and used that to reduce the taxes. If we had a surplus that we had banked and built up over the years, I would come to you and say, this is the situation. We have a difference of 1.7 million. Would you want to release a million of what we had in reserve to level out the tax rate? So, maybe it's something you want to talk about this budget season, maybe it's not, but those of you who know me know I've been advocating for this for a while, but it's up to you, so.
Andy?
I think we definitely should talk about it, because we sort of discuss it in circles every year, but there's two dimensions I'd like to talk about. One would be that part of it, whether it makes sense to put maybe a warrant article to talk about retaining for tax leveling. The other thing is, and I know that this has been brought up in the past, is every year, we talk about a budget and then a fairly hefty, you know, sort of amount that we have to return, excess that we return every year, but it varies. You know, like this year, $1.7 million different. So, it would be interesting to see, when you do the budget this year, areas where you saw the excess get returned, and find out whether the budget process that we use is accurate. Because what happens is, people ask me, says, why do you do the budget and knowing you're going to get multiple million dollars back every year? It changes, but you're all budgeting high and then doing it back. Why don't you do more of a precise budget, so you don't rely upon what's returned? And I know some of those are revenues that come back in that you can't predict, but other ones are, like you talked about, headcount, overage, and things like that. So, I'm not looking for an answer today. What I'm saying is, is that when we talk about the budget, it'd be good to bring that dimension up to talk about why we're budgeting the way we are, and the downfall if we were to try to, maybe try to align it with what we saw last year, and what the impact would be if we ran short, for example. So, to me, that's, it's more of a helping to, you know, Shannon talked about the communication plan about the budget. I think that dimension of budgeting is helpful to share with voters, so they understand why we sort of go through this gyration all the time.
Well, that's why we brought in a lower than we normally would have budget, and you're seeing a smaller surplus. The majority of that is always in personnel savings, and we always take credits for those who are retiring, but when you have 10% to 12% turnover in your district, and you can't really predict that every single year, although historically, it's kind of looked that way, more so now than in the past. It's, you're trying to budget for the staff that you currently have, moving them up one step on the scale, if applicable. You're trying to budget for the mix of people you have in health insurance, and then you're budgeting to the guaranteed maximum. You know, you heard that this year, by this year budget year, we're going to get a rate that's less than the guaranteed maximum, so that's going to go to surplus. So, there's a lot of nuances that you're trying to do. You're trying to predict the price of oil. You're trying to predict a lot of things, so. But yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying. So, if you're looking to, looking at those areas where we've had surplus historically in the past, and make some sort of percentage cuts based upon what we think we can do reasonably, we could look at bringing in, you know, much less of a surplus, which can be dangerous, too, so.
It's, just to close up the thought, I think it's, I'm not necessarily advocating for doing it differently, but I think you need to, when you do the budget, explain, you could make it lower, but here's the risk in the headcount area, here's the risk here, just so people are aware and understanding. We, when you've been through it a lot, like I have and others have, you know it, but a lot of times, somebody looking at the budget asks the question, you know, asks why. So, having that explanation within each area would be very helpful, I think.
Cindy?
Yeah, a little along those lines. Something that might be helpful would be what I envision as like, maybe the last three to five years, a pie graph that just shows the makeup of the surplus, that gives you a very simplistic view of where that breakdown is. And I think that that makes it easy, not only for us to review it and look at it as we go into the budget season, but also for the taxpayer.
Thank you very much. And now, we're on to item number six, which is the presentation for the joint meeting between the Merrimack School Board and the Merrimack Town Council. At our last meeting, we talked about areas of interest, and a week that worked, which is the week of the 13th. So, Tuesday, November 14th, the Town Council is available to meet, and we will look to meet at 7:00 PM, and we will find the, based on availability, the suitable room, ideally here. So, as long as we can get the space, this would obviously allow us to broadcast live, and we can go from there. And something tells me the Town Council can give us the room if we need it that badly, so. Nice to have a friend in the town that can do that for us. So, right now, the three agenda items of interest are OGGARA, the OGGARA Plan, to return it back at the end of the lend/lease program. And I think it would benefit us to have updates on the future skate park, because although it's not our property, it's a town facility, as, because it's on school property, I think we get questioned a lot about what the plan is, and we don't necessarily have that granularity, but they should, through their department heads. Fields needs, I think that Michael has brought up some fields needs through his parks and rec activity as well, and I think, based on the report that was done a few years ago, I think it was finalized in 2010, things have changed, fields availabilities have adjusted, and we definitely want to talk about what the real needs are in 2017. And then, water, the, you know, Town Council, I know, had hosted a hearing last week with members of the Department of Health and the Environmental Department from the state of New Hampshire, and had a town hall with the community to go over updates on things like blood test results and levels in the waters. I think it's things that we've been following very closely as well, and I think that we definitely want to have a nice, open dialogue about what we'd like to see, what they're working on, and if we can, if it's appropriate, and we can get the DPW, or, not DPW, my gosh, MVD, too many acronyms. So, the Merrimack Village District, who is the water governing body, if we can get members from them to maybe sit in on that agenda item, I think that would be beneficial if it can all work out scheduling-wise. So, are there any other items that you wanted to add to the agenda? Andy? Oh, sure, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry. And then, Andy, then Cindy.
It was actually in my advisory packet on the budget to you and the Superintendent, but I'm wondering if, because we're so heavily leaning on full-day kindergarten as part of the budget this year, I know that other towns have talked about the opportunity that the legislature has given to help offset the costs, and that's Keno within cities and towns. So, my question is, should that be a topic that we bring up in front of the joint meeting to see whether the town is looking to maybe do something like that to help offset some of the costs? That's my...
March? Yep.
So, one thing that we already know is that there would be 1,100 additional dollars per child that would be available to us in the year 1819. And so, there's a part of me that would just say off the top, I would love to go forward and work on all the dynamics, which we're doing right now, with the idea that we receive that 1,100 additional dollars that's already going to come to us once we say we have full-day kindergarten, and then ask for that the year after. What I'm worried about is that if we get wrapped up in the discussion of Keno in town, that could, in some way, affect kindergarten as the concept, I mean, full, just full-day kindergarten. I can just see somebody that doesn't like Keno immediately discounting full-day kindergarten, and we don't even let it stand on its own merit. So, if you can hear what I'm saying, in other words, we're guaranteed 1,100 additional dollars for going in that direction, and so, once it's underway, then to say it. But I will just say, I'm openly worried about tying the two together. I just fear that people will just say, I voted to down because I don't like the concept of Keno in town, and so, just, that is an off-the-top comment.
Cindy? Did you have your hand up as well?
I just wondered if there's anything we need to discuss regarding the elections, any upcoming...
Elections, that was the other one I missed.
Okay.
March?
I hoped that we would talk about the Merrimack Safeguard Grant, because that's coming to an end, and we need to find out about the SRO position, because that's so significant to our district. But also, the expectation after you get $1.25 million that you are to take on some responsibility, so.
Yeah, I was actually going to bring that up during my committee report, but not, because with, at the safeguard meeting we had this past week, we realized that we were supposed to even actually, in this year, start showing some self-funding of the SRO position. So, I think that we're going to be required to do some of that, and that does require joint meeting, because like with Officer Murray at the high school, it's something that typically the police have funded for the purpose of the schools, so we want to make sure. The other thing is, is that if we're able to show that in the next budget year, it frees up some money for some of the programs that Safeguard wants to be able to do with that final year of funding as part of the grant. So, both to be in compliance with the grant, and also be able to use it for what we might need, which could benefit the Mental Health Committee and other aspects of it, so thank you for remembering that, because...
That is a big one. So, on that, if something comes up between now and the sixth, let me know. I will formulate what I would call a preliminary agenda to send over to Chair Harrington to see if they have anything that they want to counter with, and get the ball rolling, and then we'll have a sub-meeting as well.
And just a detail, but just because it's a part of the process, for the scribe for that evening, it would be the Town's turn, because Sandy took minutes the last time.
Okay.
So, just as I go back, there's such a gap between when we meet that we forget those things.
Okay, and I think we're hosting, but they'll scribe?
Pardon?
Because they hosted the last one, which was about the voting locations, so we're actually hosting this one. So, but we could grab their scribe.
Whatever.
I'll make sure I put the note down before I lost it. Okay, and if there's nothing else, we will, as I said, get back to me if there's anything that comes up that was missed, but we will send it over to Chair Harrington to get her side of the table also, for relaying some ideas for discussion. So, we're on to item number seven, which is the second review of the new Board policy, and that's data and records retention with March.
Thank you. So, you remember at the last meeting, we had the Director of Student Services, John Trabrizio, here, and he's in the process of putting together a new sped manual, which is going to be before you, hopefully on November 6th. And as a part of that, one of the policies that the Board needs to approve has to do with data records retention. So, he did the first reading, and really, the one area that surfaced was under special ed records, and it had to do with the way the first paragraph is written. So, in your packet, you had exactly the same policy, and you noted up at the top, we put that Board Member Gualume had raised up the wording of that, and could it be made more clear? And so, where this is a model policy, anytime wording is raised up, we go back to the attorney that put it together, in this case, it's Attorney Will Phillips, to talk in terms of what surfaced, and then that not only helps our district, but it also helps all other districts if we raise up the wording. And so, he has just gotten back to us today, and at your place, you will see that the wording has now been modified. So, it would read thus, "The district shall retain a student's special education records until at least the student's 25th birthday, unless written consent or written request to destroy the records is received from the parent or, where applicable, the adult student." And I think that makes it much more clear, and I think that's what Board Member Gualume was going for. And I believe, as I look back at them, I believe that was the major wording issue.
Okay, so with that, if there's no questions on the modified sample of policy, we will put on consent for the next meeting. we will put on consent for the next meeting and adopt it. So of course, if anything comes up, that makes you want to pull it off, that's always your right to do so, and we can make a discussion agenda item. Now we're on, oh, go ahead.
Do we know whether, whether Mike has any objections, has he chimed in at all?
Um, no, because we just got the, the updates on, on our desks tonight, so.
Okay, okay, so.
So if something comes up, we will make sure he has the opportunity to do so, and we'll pull it off consent if, if he has concerns. So we're on to item number eight, which is the approval of October second to seventeen, two thousand seventeen minutes. Is there, is there a motion to approve? Made by Cindy, seconded by Andy. Are there any adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Cindy?
On page two, line sixty-three, Board Member Gualume stated that she would like to see regular testing of air quality in all the schools. I think that the spirit of my comment was around getting a baseline of the air quality and then taking it from there. So, not that I necessarily think we need to go in all the time and do it, but to get some kind of a baseline and then, and see where we want to go.
Seeing no others, we will put the motion to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries four zero zero. And we are on to item number nine, which is consent, and I will turn that over to Mark.
So one item on consent tonight is the approval of health, education, and exemption from instruction policy.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent? Cindy?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries four zero zero. And we're on to item number ten, which is other. First is correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come for the Board? Andy?
I had correspondence and conversation with a resident around the homework protocol.
And I had one that saw me at the hearing that I mentioned earlier this evening regarding water, and I went to listen and hear what they had to say because I wasn't sure if it was even being televised, and technically, it wasn't live. But with that, they wanted to make sure that the school board, you know, what, you know, where our eye is on, and also had questions, the cost for our testing, and is there a way that we could do it through the MVD so we don't have to pay as a district for the tests? So, and I shared that with the superintendent. Are there any comments? Seeing none? On to item number eleven, new business. Is there any new business, Marge?
So the Family Consumer Science teacher at the high school, Nicole Rollin, has put forward an invitation to the Board to be able to come at your next meeting, November sixth, approximately five thirty to six thirty, to be able to see the site as it has been renovated. You remember, we did the asbestos abatement in that area, and also of the cabinets and countertops. And so she will also host you by providing some light snacks because she knows you have a meeting thereafter. So five thirty to six thirty on November sixth, as it gets closer, and I believe she wants to send you an invitation. I told her that I would put it forward tonight with the hope that you would be able to do it, and then I'm sure she will put forward a more formal invitation. So is that something you could do?
Love to.
Yes? All right. Perfect. Thank you.
And we were done with asbestos, so it was a win-win.
It was.
Absolutely. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, we will go on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Andy?
So I have three, believe it or not.
I do.
One of, you do believe it or not?
I do believe it.
You do or not believe it?
Yeah.
So the first is, if you remember, at the last meeting, I mentioned that there, the District Wellness Committee had a meeting, I wasn't able to attend. But what I was able to do is get ahold of their minutes, and in particular, one of the items on there is that they're sponsoring a Lyme awareness event that's going to be, I believe, at the High School Little Theater on November fourteenth at six thirty. I'm not sure the specifics exactly how it's going to be run. I believe there's going to be some, some videos that are shown and some other things. So as we get to the, the next meeting, if I have more details, we'll share them. But it looks like there, that's one of the offshoots of the District Wellness is, again, a Lyme awareness evening, Tuesday, November fourteenth, six thirty, in the Little Theater at the high school. That's the current proposal. It could, could potentially change, but that's what I'm seeing here to get it on people's calendars. The second is the, as we mentioned earlier, the, the Merrimack Safeguard that met on Thursday, the fifth of October. A lot of it, there was two major topics. One, we talked about the, the grant and the, the need for us to be able to really show that we're going to be able to be self-sufficient, especially next year, so hopefully that agenda topic will be there. I guess the question I'd have for the superintendent is, does it make sense to have anybody from the, from Merrimack Safeguard to be there, to be able to answer any questions during that agenda topic?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things, and I'll work with Shannon, is to look at all the items that are listed and see who will be the presenter or whatever, because I think we have found with joint meetings before, that when you have targeted, like, who's going to roll it out, just lay it on the table. Otherwise, everyone sits around and looks at everyone else. So I think with that, we'll just say who would be the best, and obviously, we're sitting between the chair and you're on the committee, so perhaps the two of you as a team are deciding. But I think that night is to try and see if we can't free up some of the grants so that we can begin to do some other things and be able to show the grantors that we have taken and on and embraced, so.
Okay. Good. So that was the second one. And the third one happened right before this. We had a Board of Directors meeting for SARESC. Two main topics for that one is, one is that they have officially sold the event center and building on Commerce Drive in Bedford, so they, they received its closure. It's now owned by another one. The SARESC will retain part of rights of that building to, to stay in it in bits and pieces through the end of the calendar year, and they've also sort of moved to another location on, on South River Road, which is closer to the interchange with 101. So that's good news, so that the, they will no longer be responsible for any of the building part moving forward. Which leads to the second part of the topic, which was determining the way that SARESC would exist going forward. There was a lot of discussion about the way that makeup is, how we wanted to do things in terms of programs, extending it beyond just, I mean, right now, all the services SARESC provides are available to essentially any district in the state, but there's certain financial benefits to the core member districts, of which there are what, six now, I think? Six SAUs, not districts. We had an argument about what the difference between SAUs and districts were. But there's six SAUs that are still involved, they get a discount. So we were talking about the way the makeup needs to be. So a lot of sort of re-crafting of the benefits of what SARESC was starting decades ago to try to figure that out going forward. So that was part of the discussion today, so.
Okay, there, any other committee reports? Or did Andy handle it for the last fortnight? There you go. Excellent, so committee reports is closed. Are there public comments on agenda items? Seeing that the public has left, we will say no. And closed public comments. Take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, sections A and D. Made by Cindy. Do I have a second? Seconded by Naomi. And Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor?
Cindy?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. Thank you, and good night.